Hi, I'm Smokey Bear, and I made an assistant to help you out. Because only you can prevent wildfires.
Hey, Assistant Smokey Bear. Call me Papa Bear, because I'm grrrling up dinner. Do you get it?
Yes, good job.
So, what should I do with all these coals?
Don't just toss them out. Put them in a metal container, because those embers can start a wildfire.
I understand. The stakes are high.
Ha, 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 ha.
See, Smokey thinks I'm funny.
Severe weather can strike anytime, anywhere. But there's a simple way to stay safe. Hey, Jim Cantori here. I stay safe in dangerous weather by planning ahead. You can stay safe too, with a few easy steps. Build an inexpensive kit with supplies for your family's needs. Write down important information like phone numbers and medications. Always talk with your family. And remember any pets in your planning. Be ready, be safe. Start your plan today at ready.gov/plan.
Yeah. Like for the Magic Adventures aid positions on here. It just says new position instead of replacing someone, so. Sure. Yeah, I do know that all the aides aren't all. I mean, some of those aides aren't high school kids, isn't that correct? Some of them are. Sure. Yeah. Okay. Okay, okay. And then there's extended leaves. And I just wanted to clarify. So for the extended leaves, we are. If a teacher takes an extended leave. This is probably T. Then we're not paying like for. During that leave time, we're not paying for their insurance and those kinds of benefit kinds of things. Just. And then they can return after that leave period. Okay. And that's all that I had. Thank you.
Questions or concerns? Excellent. Need a motion to lead this part of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Melissa, seconded by Jennifer to approve the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those nay. Motion passes six zero. Collaborative connections. For our resolution for Minnesota State High School League.
Good evening. Presenting on behalf of Mr. Revning tonight, just an annual renewal that we do of our resolution to join the Minnesota State High School League for interscholastic athletics and fine arts events. Happy to try to answer any questions we may have, but it's pretty straightforward. If all other schools in the state participate in the Minnesota State High School League year after year. All that is a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
And one question. What is the fee? Does anyone know what the fee is that we pay for that?
I did last year. See here.
No, do you?
Yeah. Look, I think I know where it is, but I can come back to it.
Do you know? Is the fee prorated by the size of the school or the enrollment? Or is it the same fee for every school?
It's the same fee for every school. And that was kind of a bone of contention a couple of years ago in the Minnesota State High School League itself. A lot of people were saying that, you know, the services should be prorated. The conclusion was, since you kind of guaranteed the safeguard from their umbrella, that that service is what you're paying for, not how many students you have. The service itself, or, you know, legal to be able to participate in state tournaments, to being able to connect your officials to the sports, to all the ability to offer all the different recognized sports and activities through the Minnesota State High School League. Jeremiah, you've had other, you know, being connected to activities. Would you add anything to that?
So would the adjustments that we made to middle school sports be reflected? And then it doesn't? Only the high school?
We had it reduced, didn't you, our high school opportunity? So.
Other questions? Awesome. This is an action item also.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Made by Jennifer, seconded by Candace. Approve the Minnesota State High School League resolution. Asked presented by Clay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Motion passes six zero. Clay and Deb with the employee handbook.
Deb, come on up. Me again with Ms. Rekka now. Dr. Wilson is unable to be here tonight, so we're presenting on her half. I have Deb Rekka, our human resources specialist here with me. We're bringing forward the 2022-23 Monticello School District Employee Handbook tonight. As the board knows, the Human Resources Department, and especially Ms. Rekka, have put a lot of time and resources into updating this handbook and getting it ready for the upcoming school year by connecting it to policies and updating the information to make it current. Board members have all had the chance to review the handbook at subcommittee meetings and conversations with the administrative team. Ms. Rekka is here to answer any final questions you may have tonight, if there are any. Otherwise, we are seeking approval of the handbook to bring to our employees in August.
Any discussion or question? I know some discussion recently here about some policies and things like that. And I think a lot of answers were given, but does anybody else have discussion or questions? Please. Go ahead. Anybody?
Just say I appreciate how clearly it reflects back to the school district policies. Little section, we've got to reference there, so.
I think that was a big improvement. I would add, I had quite a few comments that I submitted, and I feel very good that we worked through all of them. And just, I'm throwing that out for the benefit of those who are watching our meeting tonight, that we had substantial discussion and reached agreement on everything in there. So I feel pretty good about it.
Anybody else? It will lead this to an action item to accept the employee handbook as presented by Clay and Deb Rekka.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Kathy to approve the employee handbook as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Motion passes six zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, before we move on, there was something that came forward from Tina, that we have something on the personnel matters that needs to be flipped. Rebecca Kunkel is actually our career pathway teacher. And Heather Lindeman is our art teacher. So sorry about that confusion, but we do not want them to have to teach something out of their field, something that would give them anxiety.
They might have a surprise when they read this.
Yeah, they might have a little surprise, yeah. So if we could note on the personnel matter in the notes, Clay.
We need to amend that. Yes. Action. Okay, so.
I move to accept the amendments to the personnel matters as described.
Second.
A motion made by Jennifer to amend the personnel matter presented by Lieutenant Olson, seconded by Melissa. All those in favor of amending the proposal by Mr. Olson. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those nay. Motion passes six zero. Now, innovation issue for Senator Olson.
Get to do another fun introduction. It's been a busy spring for us here. Normally, you don't get the opportunity to hire a new administration, you know. It takes about a decade before you get to hire one. And we have two lovely leaders sitting out there that we've been able to bring forward as our new principals in the district. So today is about Nicole Cartole, and I'd like to invite her up to talk to the board. Introduce yourself. We are extremely excited to get her here to be the next principal of the elementary. Those of you that should remember that James Hack is on a year leave of absence. So wish him well, but we are also very excited to. End for the future.
School board, community, and district members, thank you for having me here tonight. I'm honored to be joining this great district. My first week, week and a half have been wonderful. I've met a lot of different staff and families and some students, which has been the best part. As some of you know, I live on a hobby farm in Otsego with my family. Andy is my husband. He works for an excavating company in Corcoran. We have three daughters. Emerson will be in fourth grade at Tassan Elementary in Rogers. And then we have twin girls, Eden and Marion, will start preschool this fall. So they keep us busy. We love to travel and spend time at our family cabin in Hackensack, which we were just there this weekend. It was lovely. My professional career, I guess, started at Minnesota State University Morehead, where I got my bachelor's degree in early childhood education. From there, I taught preschool and then knew my heart was in elementary. So I went to Arizona for a couple of years and taught first grade there, and then moved back and spent most of my teaching years in the Elk River School District, teaching third grade and kindergarten. I obtained my master's degree, teaching and learning, from St. Mary's and got my principal license from there as well. From there, I went to the Yanocah Hennepin School District, where I've been the past three years as the assistant principal at Great Lake Elementary in Andover. Like I said, I am just honored to be joining this district. I've had nothing but positive interactions so far, and I look forward to serving the staff, students, and families at Little Mountain. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, sure. There you go. Get a little picture. Monticello, we've got to get rid of, you know, and. There's something in here for. Get a new picture of you here in front of them.
Jeff is running.
You're like sprinting out of the way.
Next thing, board meeting format and schedule change proposal. Spent some time looking at new format and some ideas. Clay, you're up again.
Nice for me. See if I can work this thing. Yeah, so we're here to discuss a school board format, meeting schedule change tonight. And this was prompted by conversations that the board had at subcommittee level involving the desire for more time together to discuss, collaborate, deliberate, and just have all six of you in a room together. Because as our schedule has been, a lot of discussion happens with subcommittees, where there's three at a time. And so I wanted to explore a schedule that allows for all six of you to have more time to discuss items and not just vote on them. So the proposed change that we're bringing forward tonight is to move the school board schedule to two board meetings every month, first and the third Monday of every month, with the first Monday of the month being a workshop session that would begin at 5:00 PM. And this would be a session that would be more discussion oriented. It would allow the board to cover a lot of the items that we currently cover in subcommittee that involve more discussion, more back and forth, and the opportunity just for you guys to work together and collaborate more. Those meetings would continue to be open to the public, of course. They would not, however, be livestreamed. The third Monday of the month, which is our regular meeting, and will look pretty much just like our meetings do now, will be livestreamed, will be open to the public, and will be where we handle a lot of the voting items, student presentation, celebrations, all of that stuff. We will continue with our policy subcommittee meetings. Those will be held prior to the first Monday meeting of the month, so prior to the workshop meeting from 3:30 to 5:00. And budget committee meetings will be held as needed following the workshop meetings on the first Monday of the month. I think I got that all straight. The, just a few of the benefits that we have discussed in talking with other school districts that employ this method, as well as from discussions with you guys, the school board, is that, you know, as mentioned, this provides a lot of additional opportunity for the board to discuss and deliberate together. It does make the calendar a little more compact and removes the need for Tuesday night meetings by extending our Monday night meetings and makes the schedule a little bit more consistent for everyone. And like I said, it follows a format that's been really successful in a lot of districts, including a couple close to us, like Elk River and Buffalo. If we were to approve this change, this is what our schedule would look like for the remainder of the year. We would schedule our next meeting to be held on July 25th, so that we can have one more business meeting prior to mid-August. If we didn't add that one, then we'd be looking at August 15th as our next business meeting. So that would be the reason for adding that meeting. And then it follows a pretty consistent schedule. There's one Monday that's moved back a week because of Labor Day. Otherwise, it follows that first and third Monday schedule as presented. Are there any questions from the board about this? Otherwise, of course, it's open to discussion as well.
I'm personally excited about the new format, that we have more time to discuss things all together, and the public can view it and come as well. I think that'll be great, instead of them just seeing us vote on action items that we've already discussed many times.
I'd like to give a shout out to Kathy. She kind of pushed us on this outside her box a little bit, so thank you for doing that, Kathy. So I think it's going to be good. So many times we have our subcommittee meetings, and it's left up to admin to try and translate what that subcommittee was trying to present and what their ideas were. This allows us to have communication with everybody and share our ideas and process better, so positive. Anybody else?
I just appreciate all the people, the people on the agenda tonight, because they're keeping the meetings short and concise and clear. If I was up there presenting, we don't know. Maybe it wouldn't be that way. So nice job, Clay.
I would just like to clarify, just to make sure it's clear, that on the workshop meeting, we will not have a regular board meeting as part of that. Is that correct? We will only have first policy, then workshop, then budget. It's all.
From time to time, being an agenda item that needs to have action.
That would be posted and communicated ahead of time if we need to utilize that. The districts that use this format occasionally will start that night with a very short business meeting, if they have items that can't wait for two or three weeks, or whatever it may be. But in that case, it would be posted everywhere we post our meetings in advance.
And I'd like to just clarify for the public as well, that that meeting is open for persons in person in this room, but it will not be livestreamed. But the second meeting of the month will be.
Yep. Absolutely. Yep.
Anybody else?
Will be a nice change to see.
Will be. And hopefully it helps admin and everybody a little bit more conscious of your time. So have a good night, too. Have one long night.
Hopefully not too long.
Okay. For the discussion, we need to act. This is an action item.
I propose that we accept the new format for board meetings, schedule change proposal as presented by Clay Swansky.
Second.
Motion made by Kathy to accept the new board meeting format and schedule change as presented by Clay, seconded by Jennifer. All those in favor signify by saying.
Aye.
All those nay. Motion passes six zero.
Yes.
You know.
All right. First, we have our long-term facility maintenance plan, or a 10-year plan, that has to be approved by July 31st to the Minnesota Department of Education. So around the time of our 2015 bond, legislation approved a long-term facility funding mechanism where school districts other than the top 25 can have money towards improving, not improving, preventing erosion on their buildings. So not capital where it's new or remodeling, it's, you know, roofs, parking lots, carpet, paint, all the glamorous stuff. So within this plan, some of it is already used up with our two long-term facility maintenance bonds that we did around the time of our 2015 bond to get a lot of projects done in, partner with our bond referendum. So a lot of our long-term facility maintenance is tied up with bond payments towards those two. So what we have left is on our project listing for 10 years. So there's not a lot on there that we can do besides roofs and parking lots. But occasionally, some set aside for carpet or mechanical breakdowns that happen with our condensing units or HVAC system, some flashing work that we did at Little Mountain, for example, just to kind of, at least at a bare minimum, get our buildings watertight, fix whatever we can do with our parking lot interiors. So part of this 10-year plan, you have to have your revenue projection for the next 10 years. You have to do your expenses for the next 10 years, a statement of assurances signed by the superintendent that we will spend the money accordingly, and the board knows about our projects, then they're all in compliance with laws and regulations, and then a project listing to send to the board or to the state along with our board resolution. So in your packet, you have all those attachments to look over. And if you had any questions on our 10-year plan, I'd be happy to take those.
How often are you making changes to the 10-year plan?
How far?
How often?
Probably twice a year. If it doesn't, if it changes the revenue projection, you have to have seek board approval. But if it's just because you're no longer doing a carpet replacement, you're doing this, you're not changing any revenues or the overall effect of the 10-year plan, it doesn't need board approval. It just, plans change, emergency happens where you need to fix this versus that. So try to look at it once or twice with our head custodians as well, to see what we want to do and look at, you know, different styles of what we want to do versus parking, roofs, carpet, etc. Look for a less expensive way to do things to kind of have the funds go a long way, longer way.
When you're creating your 10-year plan, you're having conversations with your staff?
Yes. So the last time we looked at our 10-year plan, like from ground zero, I think, was prior to the 2015 bond referendum. So I reached out to see if maybe we could do another, look at a 10-year plan, have the head custodians and our new principals as well kind of look at it to see what are the priorities. And then having a good list for when money does come available, I call it either above the line or below the line. So right now, what's above the line, we can fund. What's below the line, we can't fund, but it's a need when there's money. So once that happens, we can bring that to the top and have an estimate for that.
You don't use your set aside dollars. Can you roll that over?
Yes. It's a reserved fund balance. So the revenue coming in has to be spent for long-term facility maintenance projects. And there's specific language in state statute that it can't be for security, it can't be for remodeling or new things. So there was legislation to expand that, but I don't think it got passed. So right now, it's just to prevent further erosions or deterioration on our buildings. So whatever we think of a school building in a slow go, if you turn it upside down and shake it, what doesn't fall out is kind of what the 10-year plan covers. How much is on our less below the line? A lot. I mean, there's old carpet. I mean, we just got new carpet in here last year, and before that was really ragged. In our district office, there's bad carpet. At the high school, there's bad carpet. There's old cabin tree at all buildings that, you know, would be nice to get them redone, but they still work or have a purpose. They're not flying off the walls, if you will, but just a lot of dated items, pine wood, you know, orange painting in the gymnasium, just things that would be nice to have, but it's a luxury, you know, it's a luxury versus, you know, a leaky roof or potholes in the parking lot.
We love roofs.
And speaking of the parking lots, they do look nice with the spursing up that's happened the last few days. So actually, the buildings are looking really good from street level.
Well, this has been a long time since the guys, the people in the summer haven't had a major catastrophe to.
There hasn't been major projects the last two summers.
That's helped. Sorry. Well, not like a fire or, you know, like a tornado or anything. Any other questions?
You know, what are the, there's the plumbing on here, proficiency fees.
Professional fees? So it's just a placeholder. Professional fees? So it's just a placeholder, you know, for our payments to like a construction company to help manage the projects like BCI, or if there's, you know, just having a five or 10% contingency for things that might pop up with a project.
How often do we have, like, ceilings or roofs kind of inspected, tested?
I think last summer, we did some core testing on our roofs to kind of see the condition of the roofs and what was kind of the higher need. So we'll probably do that going into the fall, see what's, this school, pine wood in the high school are our biggest needs for roofing, but, you know, what should we do first?
So is that done annually typically?
Right before a roofing project.
So this is an action item.
I move to accept the long-term facilities plan as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Jennifer to accept the long-term facility maintenance plan as presented. Tina, seconded by Candace. Favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion passes six zero. And then Tina, you have to share with us current cash flow update.
Well, this is very small. I don't know if you can make it bigger, but it's in your board materials. So every year, we have to do a cash flow projection where we look at the next 18 months of the money coming in and out. We use assumptions to kind of project out the revenues and expenses. So on the revenue side, we know we're going to get 2% from the state. We kind of have our levy estimates from the last levy cycle to know what's happening there. And then miscellaneous revenue using a 1% increase. On the payroll side, using an average of 2% increase in payroll, 0% on our health insurance because we know at a maximum, we're not seeing any changes there, and using an estimate of 5% for dental insurance, and then for accounts payable, bills that aren't employees, 8% for transportation, and 3% average for supplies and utilities, knowing that some are higher than others. So kind of project that out. And it's also hard to do when you're doing budget reductions as well, because in the base, you have, you know, a certain population that you're using, and you have federal grants that you have that aren't happening next year, or new grants that are happening in the next year. And so I think overall, it kind of washes itself out. But when you look at the ins and outs for the first year, all our cash balances are positive at the end of the year. And then once we get into the next six months, it starts hitting, and the negatives are getting low. So we don't have to borrow right now, but, you know, we might have to. But this is kind of what's been shown, I think, the last three years. So I think it's more conservative in the projections where things kind of happen better than what is on here. Some of that is due to the federal grants. But for the most part, we've been able to kind of kick the can down the road, and stuff has come in to help us with our cash flow. So right now, we don't have to borrow, but it may look that way in the near future, that we may need to borrow. And, you know, as an estimate, five, six years ago, it was about 60,000 to 70,000, 80,000 of interest costs to borrow for that kind of year, you know. Trying, I'm losing track of what word it was, just, you know, cash on hand, use it if you need it type of thing in the private world. So that's kind of the equivalent to the school world. So just giving you an update now that we look okay for now, and I'll send this to Ellers just to get their opinion. And then we have a graph to kind of show cash flow and what I've, the blue line is what I've invested. And we always hit a low point in February, because that's when we have debt payments as well going out. So overall, just trying to make sure we have cash on hand when we need it, make sure people are getting their checks on the 15th and 30th every month, for sure.
Doesn't it usually project out like this when you continually project out two, three years from now?
Well, it's hard to project out longer than this. I mean, everything is constant right now. We know we're getting, you know, at least 2% for the next couple of years. Other than that, it's hard to know what will happen, as well as, you know, if there is a forecast where the state isn't having a good budget and they want to borrow from schools, that right now, we get 90% of our aid during the year, and then 10% after the year's over. Sometimes that's been as low as 65% during the year of getting our aid, and 35% after the year. So that really takes a hit on the school district's cash flow. So assuming all things equal, we probably have the similar trend, and just trying to live within our means as well.
Do we have any questions for Tina about the cash flow proj?
It's not an action item, just for your review.
We have motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Motion made by Melissa to adjourn, seconded by Jennifer. Meeting for July 11th. Also, school board is adjourned, 6:33. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close nay. Motion passes six zero. Adjourned, 6:34.